Could I have a roll call?
John Hutzco.
Bob Wilbar.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
If everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have two upcoming meeting dates, one on December 1st and one on December 15th. And I have no minutes to be approved this time. I think Pam, you've sent out one or two for us to approve at our next meeting on December 1st. So we're caught up.
Wow.
I know. So we'll move on to the first item on our agenda is Hopewell Animal Hospital. We have a request for an extension. Any discussion or feedback? Any?
Hi, yes, I'm Kim Buchanan from Hopewell Animal Hospital.
Great.
And we're requesting an extension because we're waiting on Department of Health.
So shocked by that.
Yeah.
How long of an extension?
How long do you give?
We would normally, since the original was granted in December 2014, we'd normally probably go a year for first extension.
Sounds good to me.
How long do they wait for the Board of Health approval?
When did you submit?
I'm not exactly sure because some of the things that the engineer did the first time had to be done again because the first time there was not a person from the Board of Health there. And then they had to do it again. And that was maybe two months ago with the Board of Health person there.
Okay.
I don't know when my office manager like actually filled out whatever she needed to fill out, but it was about two months ago that they were there.
Okay.
Okay.
It's probably a little while to go.
A little while to go, yeah, I was gonna say, okay.
Anything Brendan, Michelle, Joe, Scott, anything we should go over? Okay, any other questions or comments from board members?
No.
Move to extend Hopewell Animal Hospital for an extra year.
Great, I have a motion, do I have a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Guardian self-storage amended site plan on Route 376.
Evening, everybody.
Evening.
Frank Rettel for Guardian self-storage. And with me this evening is Kelly Riddle-Harvesty, one of the owners. To begin with, I put our disk in and I've got the map up on the screen, but for some reason it's not coming out.
Yeah, Michelle, there should be a toggle button to turn it up on the screen.
I must have done something wrong.
Just give us a moment. I feel like we should have Jeopardy music playing or something.
Yeah, exactly. There we go.
There we go.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Since our last time here, we took all of your consultants' comments and comments of the board and we made some revisions to our plan. I believe that we addressed all of the issues that were raised before. We've received some new comments on our revised plan. One of the things I should probably say at the outset, and I have to apologize for any confusion on this, this is going to be a one-story building. The elevations that we've supplied to the town show overhead doors. Every one of those doors are faux doors. We did that for aesthetic purposes. There's only gonna be two doors to enter the building on this side, I think two doors on this side and the other doors on this side. There's no entry on this side of the building whatsoever. The overhead doors that you see are for, really it's just for aesthetic reasons only. We know we're going for architectural review when we were planning ahead. Kelly is also, wants to make sure that the building looks real nice, especially, you know, with the neighbor behind us. Right now, there's just a bunch of cars parked right there. And this whole process started because we wanted to clean up our site, get rid of the outside parking and put up a beautiful building, which will also help us better serve the customers that we have from the town. The town engineer brought up a drainage issue. He did mention that an extra catch basin should be installed on the property. We agree. Our construction manager, Otto Miranda, will probably reach out to Mr. Dennis so they can agree upon where the best location for that drainage will be. For the onsite traffic pattern, we've also inserted turning radiuses for tractor-trailer. The model that we used for the turning radiuses is 55 feet. Right now, as far as onsite traffic, we did some research into our records. On an average, at this site, each day, 15 cars. That's it. That's quite common in the self-service and self-storage industry.
What's your, sorry.
I was gonna say, how long do they stay?
It depends. Some of them are just dropping something off. They may be there five or 10 minutes. Other people might be moving in for the first time. It could vary. It really varies. For the most part, they're not there much more than 15, 20 minutes, once they've already been an established customer.
What's the total square footage you have right now?
Oh, for the other, for all of the buildings?
Yeah, for the existing buildings.
I have to defer to Kelly on that.
Rough is fine.
Maybe 76,000.
Okay. And this building is gonna be, I think it changed a little, right? It's 11 or 12?
Just shy of 15, just shy of 16,000.
Oh, just shy of 16, okay.
Yeah, 15,000 and change.
This'll bring on maybe two or three cars a day.
So maybe 18 or 20 cars a day?
Yeah, this'll bring on maybe two or three cars a day. These are really quiet uses. You can drive through there and not see a soul. You can drive in there and see three or four cars just sporadically. The nice part about it, as you can see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we need to catch you for the minutes.
The nice part about it too is it's just not typically used during rush hour. This is like, you know, Saturday morning, Sunday afternoon. It's a very quiet use.
Is, this building, as I recall, is very much more of the same. There's nothing in here that's gonna change the usage patterns.
No.
Right?
No, the reason I put all the faux doors up is, well, I was here several meetings ago and was talking to the neighbors and one of the things they brought, first they misunderstood which parcel I was developing. They thought we were doing something here in the corner. But they brought up to me, now we can hear these doors opening and shutting once in a while. So I got rid of all the exterior doors. That's why they're all fake. The only thing you see are the passage doors. You have to come inside the building and open and shut your doors. So that, it really won't annoy them. I hope it won't annoy them.
Is there, how many cars can you queue at this new building? And still have other cars kind of get around? Have we announced that last?
It's 28 or 30 feet crossed?
Yeah, this, this drive here, I believe, is 30 feet. 29 or 30 feet. I think it was 30 when I scaled it off earlier today.
There's a big glass in there, yeah.
So in other words, it would be, it's not as wide as a town road, but cars could be parked along here and you'd still be able to drive alongside them.
Brendan, I know we were looking to make sure there was adequate site circulation for cars parked along the building near one of the doors and then also cars needing to pass through. Have we looked at that or do?
I think the cars are okay. I think, you know, one of the things that did come up is someone from the, one of the members of the Board of Fire Commissioners wanted the fire commission to look at the circulation of the fire apparatus for the town. So even though it's not residential use or anything, the truck that they would use is their 100-foot ladder truck. I mean, that's the truck that would come to a fire at the site. So that was a comment that.
Yeah, actually, I noticed that, I believe, in one of the comments and I was surprised to hear it because we had received some comments from the fire commission in August before our first meeting. And the only thing at that time they were concerned about was a knock box and an access code, which was already taken care of. I'm not a fireman, I've never been one, but I've seen fire departments fight fires. I have never seen a fire truck pull right up to the burning building. They're always back. And they shoot the water because they don't want to get too close to the heat. If they were gonna bring a ladder, let's say, for instance, this building caught fire. If they want to bring a ladder truck in, they'd bring it in and probably park it here and shoot water. Or they could come around this way, park it here, and shoot water.
Well, I think that's what they wanna make sure.
I think that's the point. We just need to make sure they can actually get the truck in and around the buildings.
And how would we, how would we satisfy?
We can, I can provide you the template that they have.
Oh, that would be perfect. Actually, our.
The same way you demonstrated the.
Our architect had asked me to see if we could get a template.
And I didn't get to it yet, but I can email you that.
That'd be great.
And email you that template and you can do it the same way you did the tractor-trailer.
Okay.
To make sure that they can get in and get out.
I will tell you one thing, we had a fire on one of the properties.
Not this, but.
Not this site, another property several years ago.
Town of Lloyd.
The trucks came in and they stopped, they walk in with the hose. They don't bring, at least in that situation, they did not attempt to bring the truck right up there along.
I think the concern is you've got several buildings here and so wherever the best place to place the fire truck, they want to make sure they can get in and get out.
Template would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll use the template and then we'll play around with it and we can, we can respond to that. That's fine.
Just so you understand, though, in the town, there's a Board of Fire Commissioners.
Yeah.
And then there's the Fire Advisory Board.
Oh, okay.
One of the, one of the members of the Board of Fire Commissioners asked the Fire Advisory Board to look at that for the circulation, even though I know they've provided you comments already.
Yeah.
But they were asked again to take a look at the circulation.
Okay.
And that resulted in our comment too. And that's why we just wanna make sure that.
Then we'll look at it and we can respond.
That's the, you know, that's just the truck that's, that would respond to this location, so.
Okay.
Make sure to get in.
Very good. Now, the only other thing I think that we haven't discussed, and I believe that everybody is deferring to somebody else, I think Michelle may have brought it up, is parking. Ms. Robbins had indicated that there's a section of the code that says, that is required, an additional parking lot for this back building. And I took a look at the code section myself and that section, with all due respect, I don't know if it really applies to us. The category that I believe Ms. Robbins was referring to is entitled "storage, warehousing, and distribution." Not self-storage. To me, that indicates.
Like a trucking outfit.
Like a Williams lumber with a big building.
So let's, why don't we have Michelle just give us the.
Basically, it's the only, it's the closest parking requirement.
You're having a hard time hearing, I'm sorry.
It's basically the closest parking requirement to that particular use, which I think I indicated to you in the.
Right.
So the issue in this particular case, because you don't have, normally when people have, you have overhead doors, they drive right up to the overhead door and then they go back and forth right in front of the unit. So in this particular case, they're gonna have to access at a common door, right? And go into their units and come out. So there will be probably, the cars will want to park as close to that door as possible. So we just need to know that we have adequate parking to, one, accommodate the number of people that would be coming potentially at any given time and, two, that you could still get around them if they were parked there.
I'll try to address that real quickly. The site plans that we gave you, I think, show that there are.
We just wanna have you come a little bit closer to the.
Yeah, I think the site plan that we gave you, there appears to be one or two access doors in the back. One or two in the, I think there's one in the back, two in the front, and another four to five down the side. Even if I had four people on the property, it's six acres, it would be really highly unlikely. And I've never seen it. I've been doing this for 33 years. Anybody has a problem getting in and out of a unit or any area. I do have similar buildings to this on other properties. And even if they're there, they come and they go. It's quick. It's not like a common entrance. Go ahead.
So I spoke with Brendan about it and there is no specific parking requirement, ITE, which is the parking standard.
Right.
For this type of use. So under our code, the planning board does have some discretion to play with the parking requirement, but you have, would have to feel comfortable that the site had the adequate parking to allow. And how many parking spaces are currently at the site right now?
I think I got four or five up front.
Four or five, one for the offices.
In the office. I have one manager on site and then rest are just for, there's a handicap spot, obviously, and for somebody who's coming and going for pay rent or whatever.
And you have folks, but you allow cars to pull into the back and park next to the building they're accessing.
They have to, you know, they've gotta be as close to their building as possible.
So I think, Michelle, I don't know if the parking number that was in your memo, I can't remember the exact number, but it seems very large.
Well, because, because if you do one space for every thousand square feet, which is what's currently required for storage or warehousing, it would be 16, about 16 spaces that would be required.
So right now, we've got, and I know that you, you know where I'm going with this, we've got seven, roughly 75,000 square feet of finished space that's adequately parked with four or five parking spaces. So, and probably other areas where cars can queue next to a building or things like that if they're not all parking up by an office.
We just need to understand that there's space, if there are three people show up and want to park at the door because they're carrying stuff out, that there's space to accommodate.
So that's what I'm asking you is, do we have them stripe an area that says you can queue cars here and just put a couple of like parallel parking spots next to the building? Are we putting them in a particular place or?
Well, I think that goes to circulation on the site and whether or not if there's cars parked at the door, if a fire apparatus or whatever else would need to get through could get through and.
Because I think, unless anyone disagrees, I don't think we need 16 additional parking spots at this site. I think we're comfortable that.
But aren't we adequate?
With 15 people visiting the site today, even with the additional space, let's go to 20. There's over 10 buildings. The odds are that they would all want the same building. Only we're conditioning for an outlier.
I just have to follow the requirement in the code when I write my memo, otherwise.
So, no, 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 I'm with you, but like you said, the planning board has some purview here. So I think we're okay.
You can, you have discretion.
Part of what I'm getting at is, and I haven't been out to see this or onto the site, but it faces another building, right? So could, are there doors on that side of the building? Could we have cars potentially park on both sides and now there's only a narrow travel lane? Or is there?
Well, we've left at least 30 feet travel lane, any place to drive around the building. And it's even a little bigger here because the turning radius for the tractor-trailer goes right around that way. A 55-foot truck goes that way.
So what I'm getting at is, if you have doors in the, these two buildings that face each other, right? The two long, long ways.
These two?
Right, so are there door, are there door?
There's overhead doors between here.
The new building and the one next to it, those two, right?
Right there.
There's overhead doors here.
Are there doors to access the existing building that would face or be on the same side of that building as the door that you've noted for this new building?
There are doors on all sides of all buildings.
Okay, so as long as there are, then what I'm getting at is, there should be a designated place where you want cars, so you don't have cars parking next to the door of one building and next to the door of the other. And now 30 feet, you're not gonna get a car in between them. That's, that's the only thing we're getting at.
I think what happens, they just pull up to wherever their unit is. Especially on this side, I have some outside doors. So if I'm in 203, I'm gonna pull up in front of 203. It just, I know it's bizarre, it just hasn't happened. These sites are not busy.
There's, I mean, to the best of your knowledge, there's no business that's using that as a dispersal point. Yeah, is there?
In what regard? I mean, we have people, they have, they store things.
Because I think that's where Michelle's going with the idea of warehousing, that there's business that's depositing stuff.
Where I'm going, and I'm still actually not 100%, I may be misunderstanding you. My understanding is that there's one, there's an entrance that people go into and you actually access your units from indoors. Is that the case? Or are you accessing the units from outdoors?
Access the units indoors.
Indoors.
Indoors. So my, where I'm going is that typically when you have an indoor place, you have a door that everybody acts.
Cars that queue next to the door.
And they bring everything to the door. So they all will park sort of in a similar place, whereas in the other units, they may park all along the building.
And what I'm getting at, Michelle, is that you've got doors now on two buildings that face each other and there's only 30 feet.
Right.
Or 20 some feet. So I just think for this particular building, you may wanna have a designated place where you try to queue the cars rather than have them kind of randomly.
We can play around with that.
I think it's striping. I don't think it's any sort of construction.
Yeah, no, I see where you're going.
Or even just a.
It could happen any place throughout the site.
I'm sorry, we can't have two conversations, so we need to just. Michelle, if you can turn your mic because we need to hear.
For example, on this one, on this one. On this one side, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven entrances that they can come and go in and out of the side. So the stacking issue I don't really see as a huge issue.
These are now all work yours. And these all work as well?
They do not.
Right, okay, so that's what I was trying to.
You know, I truly just wanted to accommodate the neighbors and they really just didn't want.
So these were the doors you were talking about?
Those are doors.
Are they accessible?
Yes.
Okay, I was getting confused.
And you have one in the back, again, that's accommodate the neighbor in the back and two in the front. So you have all these doors, you have seven, eight, nine, 10 doors in this building. There's just pass doors, which makes it much quieter. But there's a lot, there's plenty of room to access.
I understand the concern with the code.
Did you understand what she was saying? So basically.
Would you like me to bring this up, just so your question?
I'm okay.
I'm just suggesting you have somewhere striped that helps cars know where to park so that they're not blocking. To me, some paint, I don't think it's anything.
Yeah.
That's always a problem.
We can, we'll work with that.
And what we would, what we would do is, we would build into any resolution, the board's acceptance of whatever the parking is at the site. That's something that's very common. We do have uses like this that don't 100% fit into the code and that's why there's some leeway for the board to make that adjustment.
How married is the actual placement of these doors? Like, I mean, because it would make sense to me that you put a parking space sort of on either side of the door.
I can play a little bit, what happens, the reason I get married to it is because I have fire codes in the interior, so I have to make sure I don't have dead ends. So these were, we probably did an initial interior layout to make sure that this can be safely circulated because, again, I removed the doors from the back of the building. So I think I've got 20-foot corridors, or I'm not 100% sure what it is, but that's how these doors ended up where they ended up.
Well, there looks like there's almost enough room anyway.
You have 20 feet, you have at least 20 feet, because you have 20-foot doors.
So it's gonna be a spot, a spot, a spot.
Absolutely.
One on either side.
Yep, one in the back, one in front, whatever.
Okay. Actually, it looks like 11, 11 spaces.
Yeah, I'm not even saying you necessarily need that many. I just think there should be a place where someone knows it's okay to park here and hopefully not park next to someone else or double park or block somebody.
Against the easy pitch.
It's just a suggestion.
Yep.
No, it's a good suggestion. I think I've hit upon the new issues that have been raised. I don't know if any board members have any questions that haven't come up yet that we can respond to.
Any feedback from the daycare center, other than the thing about the.
No, actually, they, they've been a good neighbor. They don't bother us, we don't bother them. They haven't complained to us about anything.
I mean, I realize they do have a fence there too, so.
Yeah.
It's not like their kids are gonna be strolling over there.
Right, right. No, we, we're good neighbors. We don't have any problems with them. And it's just, actually, I think that they're gonna like this a lot better than looking out the back of their property and seeing the cars there.
I was lost when you started.
Yeah.
Brendan, anything else you wanted to cover?
Just wanted to ask the question of the selection of the WB50 or the 55-foot tractor-trailer.
Yeah.
Is that based on experience?
Yeah.
That's the type of moving truck or whatever?
That's, yeah, that's what we use for all of our sites and that's, generally, you'll never see anything bigger than that at one of the sites.
I will say that this is probably a larger, bigger site than most, most properties are and the aisles are much bigger. We always make bigger aisles than most typical self-storage companies do. Typically, they're 25 feet. Ours are at least 28, 30 feet wide.
Okay.
Michelle, anything else we need to cover?
Just that, because the original seeker for this particular site would have been done on a 4,200-square-foot building, technically, you just need to contemplate the potential for impacts related to a larger building. So that would be traffic, which, which they addressed, circulation, also potential visual impacts and anything like that. So as part of their seeker review, I would just, those are the kinds of things that you would need to contemplate as lead agency and you'll have to declare your intent to be lead agency.
Okay. Joe, anything else we need to cover?
Just an observation with the exterior doors. If you could also show them on the site plan, I think that would help because then they'll be shown in relation to the parking spaces. Is there a way to show the exterior doors?
I'm misunderstanding, I'm sorry.
His comment was that when we show, probably show where the doors are located on the.
Scott, anything else?
Just a question on HVAC. This is gonna be air conditioning and heat?
Yes.
So I don't know if the units, how much noise they make, but you know, maybe some consideration should be given to the placement of those.
They really don't make much noise. And they're inside? Do you want me to take a unit?
They're not rooftop.
Okay. So if we can just get that information.
Yeah, we'll take two, we'll take two interior units, it's not a need for these two.
Mm-hmm. But they'll be inside?
They're inside.
Okay.
As we've done on the other building.
And then unless there are any further questions, do I have a motion to circulate for lead agency?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you'll coordinate that circulation through our planning office and.
Schedule for a hearing?
Yeah.
Make a motion for that?
So we need, yep, so we need to be, let's see, the 17th, we need to be 30 days out. So it's probably the first meeting in January.
Yeah, what's the date on that?
It's January 5th, or the meeting after that would be January 19th if the fifth is fine.
The 19th I'm out, that's good.
She'll be away the 19th, but the 5th is fine.
The 5th is fine? Okay. I'm gonna.
A motion to hold a public hearing on January 5th.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. January 5th, and just remember, you have, I'm sorry, Michelle.
Do we already send them to the RV?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay. Yes, when you have, make sure you have, get on their agenda. And our public hearing is their public hearing, so you need to get in front of them before, preferably before this public hearing begins.
Will do. And I can coordinate any details through, through the planning office.
Absolutely. Yep. Okay, great.
Great, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a referral from the town board with JF E Associates and a proposed rezoning.
And I think, yeah, I was gonna say.
My stuff, I think my stuff is here for that, right? And Michelle, I know you can walk us through part of this as well. Hello?
How are you? You wanna get up here for this one?
Yep.
So, right now, what's in front of the planning board isn't an actual site plan application, but if there is a proposal that the town board has referred to us for the rezoning of this parcel, so if you wanted, like, just walk us through.
Yeah, I don't have something.
I'm going to throw up on top there, but.
That's okay.
With me tonight is Ed Pilati. Ed is one of the owners of the East Fiscal Golf Center, okay? Everybody's familiar with the location.
Yeah.
Ed's been here a few times over the years. So, so the, you were provided, right, a packet from, from the town board, town board as a referral relative to, while it comes across as a rezone, I'd like to really kind of quote it as kind of a little modification of the current zoning that exists. Section 194-67 of the East Fiscal Code allows for basically outdoor recreation, large-scale outdoor recreation. And what it does is, within that provision, it goes through a number of allowed uses, okay? Which include golf range and miniature golf and a number, number of other things, of which all, you know, a number of those uses apply to the property as it currently exists. And that's actually how it got its approval through this board years ago and it operates today. What the applicant is looking for is a, in addition to those permitted uses within that section, the ability to put in exterior fields, okay? You're provided, I assume you were provided a packet from the town board, which again had our rezone application and the AF and some other things. I don't necessarily know if.
I just, I, when I was reading the materials, I'm sorry to interrupt. How is, how is baseball not covered under outdoor recreation?
Just, for whatever reason, it wasn't listed as an eligible use in the special permit that they created at the time.
There's no like sweeping clause that kind of says things that resemble outdoor recreation?
That's what we defined.
Really? Amazing, okay.
They do allow batting cages, but not, so I think that's as accessory use.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I apologize, Mike, for interrupting, but it was just like one of those ones that you just kind of read and go, what?
I hear you. But, you know, how many, I mean, there's a lot of different sports. It doesn't say lacrosse fields either, but soccer fields. So, you know, you could really go crazy with regards to how many sports and, you know, if you really got detail on it, but I will.
But I think if we could have generic wording for any type of field, that would be.
Right, I will point out, and, you know, again, this is the path that we were asked to proceed with relative to modifying the zoning. There is a, a section within that eligible uses that go into freestyle ice skating or other such uses that as the zoning board may deem similar to those above listed, which are the A through, were one through five, and inconform to the definition about our recreation developments. So I think one of the possibilities could have been, we could have went to the ZBA and they could have made a possibly determine, made a determination on the use, but we can, we could do that or we could certainly come and actually get law changes.
Were there any other things you wanted to change about the current special use?
In terms of the current uses?
Or in terms of any of the conditions that might be required and things like that?
I mean, why wouldn't we change it to be something like, things that people do, going out with like personal equipment, running around on grass? I mean, I mean, why?
No, I think that's the point, that we're here to, to help. When we get a referral from the town board, what the town board is doing is saying to the planning board, you have an opportunity to ask us, to offer our comment. So I agree with your comment that yes, the, the special permit should be made broader to allow some of these typical uses, because right now it's not.
I mean, they're cer, it's, they're certainly consistent and complementary to the uses that are currently there. So in my opinion, it's, it's a similar type of land use. It's not going to change the, the character of the site. What could potentially change the character of the site is the intensity of use. So sometimes you see it because something is mildly used and then all of a sudden there's a great intensification of a use and you have a lot more traffic and you have a lot more people there, that would, could sometimes be considered a change. But in this particular case, I'm not sure that, that's what would happen, maybe on certain occasions during like a high tournament day, but I'm not sure that that would happen regularly at the site. But those are things to also consider when you're talking about zoning text changes.
So, and I, I think, and I apologize, I meant to bring my packet with me and I left it in the other room. There's an acreage requirement, there are some other specific requirements that are currently in that zoning text. So Mike, I just want to make sure that if there's other changes that are being proposed and that this board knows that even if there aren't other changes being proposed, that when the town board asks us for feedback, we can look at that zoning text and if we think there's other things that might be appropriate, we can suggest them at this time.
And Mike, just so I understand, what are you planning on doing with the dome?
Dome, the dome remains.
It would remain, it would just be indoor practice areas or?
Indoor, yeah, seasonal indoor facility, practice facility, which is currently what it.
But you're not necessarily making that all softball, you might have other uses in there as well.
Yeah, it could be lacrosse and the, the, the football, football, that stuff.
So, so if that's the case too, we want to make sure that whatever zoning text language we put in there allows those, because even right now, it probably says golf dome, home or right or.
Yeah, it's baseball softball.
Baseball softball, so.
But that's what it says on the exterior of the building, but we certainly want to cover it to make sure that the use was from here on out, it was of non-question, so I, I, yes.
And then we have to also just understand what other sites that this could apply to.
That's what I was just going to. So, so did you look at the, did you look at the special permit and the other parcels in town that might fall under this?
Well, I, we haven't, I haven't gone through and looked at every single parcel as to where this would apply. I'm not particularly sure in town where a current, a facility, other than, I'm not too familiar with the new facility, which hasn't been constructed yet, in terms of, of where this would apply. I'm, I'm only aware that this is, this is the only one in town, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be limited because of it's, it's required to be on a state road and the acreage requirement is twenty-five acres.
That's part of, the state road is part of the special permit right now.
Yeah, it's part of the special permit right now, is that it's not a state road. So that, so there's going to be limited parcels that it would apply to just because of those criteria, but there will be potentially other parcels.
What do you plan to do?
I don't think it'll be zero other parcels though.
Are you going to stay onsite with your, with your wastewater line or?
That's, that's the plan, yeah. Yeah. We, I mean, they have currently facilities onsite as it is, certainly they're going to have to be expanded based upon the modification, the intensity of the use potentially. But going back to your question relative to the other conditions of a special permit, I, we did take a look at that as part of preparing our concept plan. We did try to take those into account, so we didn't need any other modifications. For example, no structures, buildings can be within a hundred feet of the property line along 52. Is it dug out a structure? I assumed that it was.
Yes, that's a good assumption.
Thus, we kept everything off, a hundred feet off the road, things such as that. So, I, I think impervious coverage, things such as that, again, again, mostly whether it's, it's grass or, or it's, you know, turf or whatever it may be, it appears that we meet those requirements as well. So, we did, we did consciously take a look at those provisions of a special permit when developing the.
And Mike, did you, I can't remember now off the top of my head if there was a snack bar, was an accessory use? And is there any plans for that? Because usually when you have these, this many fields, there usually is some sort of refreshment area.
In terms of the, the dome itself, there is not, and I can't see that.
You don't have the language of the code in front of you?
I do.
The special permit language? Can you see if it's, I can't, I feel like I saw that somewhere, but I don't know if it's in this special permit or.
I, I don't see anything relative to, within the special permit itself, under 194-67, where it indicates permissible indoor activities may include food service facilities, equipment or clothing, customer accessory uses, video games, meeting and assembly. So there is, within that, looks like that's built in. I can tell you, I don't, there's, I think confidently I can tell you, in terms of the dome itself, there's no provision to change that. Maybe there's an existing office building where right now people come in and they pay, largely it's really geared toward the golf and paying for the batting cages and things such as that, the ones that automatically aren't, automatically pay for it at the cages themselves. But there may be a proviso or modification in that. But again, we would come before this board relative to a site plan approval and we would have to meet those requirements. I think it's a fair question and I appreciate to make sure that what we come in with, we only do this once, and what we're coming in with.
Well, and I, I still think part of this, I don't think it's going to be zero parcels that might be eligible for this, so we need to understand how many other parcels and what size they are, so.
And then the other question I have, I mean, I'm just thinking of the typical things that you see when you have lots of sports built in one area and the other thing is sports lighting. You will often see large, and they typically do not meet, the poles typically do not meet height requirements for whatever's in the zoning for, for the town. So that may also be something that the, the board may want to consider recommending or not recommending as part of the special permit. The issue, I mean, depending on where the location is, and obviously we don't know where all the potential locations are that this could apply to, you could have impacts related to sports lighting. The lights are pretty good now and they can keep them cut off, but you still could potentially have neighbors nearby or whatever. So that's also something to consider as part of, whether or not you would recommend that as part of the change.
As I recall, it is pretty lit out there. I mean, you can see that ball disappear a hundred and fifty yards out, I mean, a golf ball, right? So it's, it's pretty bright.
But the, the difference is, like, for instance, I can give you an example, is on, on the Taconic State Parkway, there would probably be issues with ship bow if they saw gigantic eighty-foot poles, and sometimes poles can be eighty feet. So just, it's just something that, when you're making the recommendations to the town board that you would have to ask them to consider.
Would the simplest thing be to do, to go to the zoning board and just get a variance for the site, add those words in?
I, well, I'm thinking that, I don't know, maybe Pam, you can correct me on this or not, that this may have been one of those special permits that was initially provided, the zoning board had the authority to do, so that may be why it tells you to go to the zoning board. It may be one of those initial special permits that had zoning board approval instead of, that then ultimately got sent to the planning board for approval, but I'm not sure about that.
Only problem going to the zoning board, then you kind of miss the whole traffic, parking.
You can't, you can't vary a special permit. Once, once you've created a special permit, you cannot get a variance for the special permit. You have to do a rezone for it. But I think that language in there may or may not be a leftover from when it was issued by the zoning board. We can check on that, because a lot of the special permits used to be issued by the zoning board and then went to the planning board.
Can you answer your question if it's easier or not easier? Maybe, depending on how many months I get stuck at the zoning board.
You can't do it, you can't, you can't vary.
She's telling me I, we, we can't if in fact that's the case, and we're, we've already started the wheels of the progression of this process too, which is okay, so.
It just sounds so reasonable that there should be some easy way to do it.
Right.
You know, when I was prepping for this and I looked, you know, the various recreational facilities, the only complaint I've ever heard from neighbors of one is the soccer complex because people park on the grass right next to 52 and you can have cars pulling out from like eighty-five different slots. So it creates a traffic nightmare. And you're not going to change the ingress and egress of this site, are you?
No.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so I mean, so the only thing to, and this would be more of a site plan issue, obviously, once you know what the extent of the application would be, is that they, and maybe you have something in the zoning that protects you in this particular case is that you, you consider the number of tournaments and then potentially have, you could write in the zoning, for instance, that like if there were going to be, if there was going to be sports lighting, that the sports lighting only be allowed to, you know, to continue till like ten or eleven PM and you have specific requirements related to when the lights go off, or that there should be only a certain number of weekend evening games that could be played or whatever it is. Sometimes you'll see that in zoning. I do see other issues I've seen in other communities, not necessarily this one, related to sports facilities, would be lighting, that has come up quite a bit in other places.
But I do agree with Mike though, I mean, we, we would want to make sure that, and I think, I'm just trying to think back to this portion, I believe what we said was over a certain number of people based on that site and what it could accommodate, they would need an event permit. So, outside of a special permit that allows the site plan to move forward, you could require that if there's going to be a certain concentration of cars there for a tournament or something like that, that there would be, they would need to have an event permit issued, which would require police and whatever to provide appropriate traffic controls or something like that.
Right, you could, you could require that.
So I don't think like on any given day with one or two fields in use, people are going to drive out across the grass, but I agree with you, if all of them are in use because there's a tournament going on, you could start to have chaos.
Or, and easement with the, the crews across the street.
That, that's, I mean, in this particular case, how many parking spaces are you requiring, are you showing right now?
It's about four hundred and fifty.
Four hundred and fifty. So, I, I mean, I think obviously it depends on what's being proposed. So we're looking at this in two different ways, looking at what we're recommending back to the town board is zoning and then we're, we sort of know what.
Yeah, no, I know our current focus right now is just the zoning text and if there's any changes, we would recommend based on.
But one of the things I think that you could say, like for instance, if the public assembly is over five hundred persons on the site, that the applicant must prepare a traffic management plan to show where they're going to park the cars and how they're going